All right, good evening. Let's call the December 9th City Council Business Session to order a roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, all present duly noted. With the exception of Councilwoman Curtis Gimmery, David, is she on the phone?
She is.
Joining us, be it Paul.
Okay. Hello, Elizabeth.
She can't hear you because the microphones aren't turned on.
Ah, there we go. There we go. All right, how are you feeling?
All right. I'll be there.
All right, pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. President? Okay, folks, now, audience, I hate to do this to you, but we have an executive session to start the evening. So what that means is unless you are a city staff person or alternatively with the press under certain perceptions, we'll have to ask you to leave the room while we get through this first executive session. So my apologies, and we will call you back. So given that, the script to announce the start of an executive session. The City Council will now meet the session, the executive session. All right, the City Council now meet the session, the executive session, for the purpose of pursuant to ORS 192662E real property transactions. The executive session is, as mentioned, held pursuant to ORS 192662. Representatives in news media and designated staff and other persons are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience will be asked to leave the room. No decision will be made in this executive session. At the end, we had a consultant who's here this evening on the city's dollars, so we needed to get that one done first. The second executive session, item five, will move to, if you're following along in your script, the 12B. So now we go to the city manager's appointments.
Okay, so I'm trying to be great under this. I don't have a lot of things. I've just spent a lot of time in City Hall, sort of run out my purse hours. Thankfully, the manager's done a great job stepping in in the breach. So just that we are in the final stages, as you well know, of the recruitment of the city manager candidates. We are down to our final five. Council has identified five candidates to go forward. That is on their views. The community court beginning will be Sunday at 6:00. And the panel of views will take place Monday, I believe, between the hours of 9:00 and 4:00. That's what we have set aside, and the council will come back together at the close of day to consider what they have heard from everybody. So that's off and running. So you have one other item on your agenda tonight, which is the closeout of the settlement of the patent lawsuit. So that will be that item for them, but I think just on the trail of that, with the closure of that, I will kind of do an internal review to see what we may have learned in the aftermath of that and what, if any, causes we can make to address some of the lessons learned from that unfortunate outcome. On a plus side of news, we, and unfortunately, I was only able to touch base with Doug in advance real quickly, so I apologize to the rest of my staff. I don't pick up some of their positive news. But we do what we are, sending out our Friday piece. Hopefully, that is useful to you. And as ever, we're trying to be active on social media. Lacey are will be joining us, I think, in January, when her classes come to an end. And hopefully, her new schedule permits, so show up on Monday evenings with us so to start PIO, so that you'll get to see her in person. But regardless, you're doing a lot of work to get the good word out of all the plus things that we're doing, which is far more than the negative things. One of those plus things, we did receive a $20,000 grant towards our economic opportunity analysis, so that's the next step in the UGB process. So good work to the community development doing that. We are spending time tracking and going to all the various meetings with respect to monthly meetings with respect to the implementation of HB 2001, 2003, which is the densification of our single-family lots. We have submitted our data, we will be submitting our data tomorrow with respect to our 50-year population projections. And for those of you who keep track, those, the official population, I believe, is official, or at least it's the final draft or something, is up on the PSU website. Is that official?
That's the annual estimate.
Annual estimate is up. So you can see the population shift. I believe that's for the first time, so we have to take a look at that number, and that obviously is going to continue to grow. And like I said, tomorrow, we'll be heading off to PSU with respect to their 50-year forecast, which is an interesting process and interesting exercise. The regional solutions team, which is the governor's appointed folks for our region, Lincoln, Pursuit Lane, excuse me, Yamhill, then Yamhill, Marion, and Oakmonters for this region. It's actually the same region I came from, so I don't really know what happened to you on that. But anyway, we have met with them a couple of times just very recently, and they've heard a presentation on recreation on the river with regards to Millbrook and the riverfront master plan. So they're continuing to stay high and tuned to what is happening down there and looking to be however helpful they can be. And we have, of course, the staff was more happy to ask them for help, maybe up to anything we can. So that relationship continues on. The IT master plan is moving forward. Dave Brooks is doing a good job of spearheading that effort. I heard, I don't know if Dave's still back there. So we are, he is scheduled to meet with all the various customers within the city staff to get the input we'll be having with the team collectively as well as the management team. So hopefully, we'll get a good result there, and they'll get some good guidance in the future in terms of budgetary considerations and, you know, further modernization of our IT technology. And then that's it. That'll be for tonight.
Any questions for David? Moving on along. Council appointment, 7A. So this is the time where we are reappointing people to various committees here at the city. So the Budget Committee is Timothy Carpenter and Brad Sitten, Horse Storage Preservation Barbara Doyle and Chuck Sickenfuss, Planning Commission Alan Edwards and Chris Wright, and Traffic Safety Commission Mark Carlton and Jeff Reiter. So whether it's hugely important that people participate in these types of committees, it's how we do the work that we do. So many thanks to these folks who have managed and offered to read up. Any questions or comments, folks, to RCA 2019 1209?
Mr. Mayor, does he want to take a motion?
Yep, that's what I'm looking for.
Oh, I'll make a motion. I'd like to move to the reappointment of the members to the Budget Committee, Historic Preservation Commission, Planning Commission, and Traffic Safety Commission as right by the table.
Jane with a second.
Ladies.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, resolution 2019 1209 passes. Thank you. All right, and now into that portion of the evening where you all, as the public, get to make comments. So we are here and willing to listen, five minutes per speaker, and why don't we speak? Start with Mr. Michael Gunn, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, my name is Michael Gunn. Ladies and gentlemen, council, normally I've been here twice before. Originally, I was going to talk about or address the sexual harassment case, which I still am, but the, I've seen in the resolution where you evidently made a deal with Pat on his lawsuit, and Mr. Klein here said that, you know, part of this is what you learned from that, and I would respectfully, without being cynical, say you haven't learned a damn thing out of the situation. And the situation is that patents, you're paying Pat $250,000 for the resolution, $10,000 is coming from the city, $240,000 is coming from CIS, and I would ask each of you, do you have any idea how much your insurance rates are going to increase as you resolve this next year, how much of your defense costs on this? How much you spend? This case should have been settled two years ago, as I recommended, you know, a month ago when I thought. But I'm here to talk about the sexual harassment case that's been filed and bullied by Brittany Jeffries, a long-term city employee. I assume all of you have seen this, it was served on the city on the 22nd of November. So I'm asking you, have all of you, people on the City Council, seen the bully complaint that was served on the city? You've already? You should all be appalled by the allegations to me. I mean, appalled, that you would have a city employee that, over a period of four-plus years, was allowed to stay on the payroll and do what's alleged here. In my opinion, it's not alleged anymore, it's proven, because you're investigators, the firm of very ultimate sustain over these allegations. I'm here to tell you that, and I'll digress for a minute, I assume that all of you want to know who I am, etc., what I'm doing here, and I'll address that in a minute. I assume that Mr. Stone, Mr. Klein, who I've never met, are not telling you good things about me. That's just an assumption on my part. I may be wrong. I practiced law for 25 years here, okay? If you have any questions about what I'm telling you was being the straight scoop, talk to somebody that I used to practice against. Go talk to Terry Mark, who I went up against many times. Talk to Al Brown and Don Barlow, who were the founding members of Mr. Stone's predecessor firm. Talk to Larry Gray in Newburgh here. Talk to Dave Howard of Irving, Gary Wood, who have litigated in many cases against with Gary Wood. And I think all of you will tell them, or all of them will tell you, and I'm not here to shoot my horn, that when Mike Gunn was a practicing attorney, he didn't practice 25 years and win most of the cases he tried, not knowing anything, okay? So be that as it may, if people are giving you advice, I think you better redo some soul searching on that, because I read this thing about five times, and I cannot believe the incompetence of the city employees here as far as what's happened on this thing. I want to ask the females on this City Council, if you were in this position that Brittany Jeffries is in and experienced what happened over four-plus years, would you guys be real happy with your employer? I don't see any of you shaking your heads yes, okay? Let me tell you, okay, this is going to cost the city one hell of a lot of money on this case, and you've got one person to blame, yourselves. I see the same names appearing in here that appeared in this patent case. That's Anna Lee, who came in, not exactly beforehand, but came in certainly soon enough to do some damage on this thing, and the city attorney, along with other people. I see Mr. Jay Harris, who's alleged here to have told her, hey, just go out the few drinks and forget about it. And that's pretty insulting, and I've never met Mr. Harris in my life. But if you read this, you can see that Ms. Jeffries has obviously documented this thing in its entirety, day by day, etc. I want to ask you, is the person that's accused to have done all this, have there been any repercussions against her? I would say zero. And she's still on parole, isn't she? The only repercussions have been against Ms. Jeffries, who's been humiliated, the city's done nothing about it. Finally, in April of 19, you guys were on notice in April of 2019 on a tort claim of this, which was, you know, almost four years after this whole ordeal started. And I'm not sure what was done. You hired Barry Elster to investigate it. I've already told you my opinion on those. My time's almost up. I have Mr. Kylie Peppers, who's playing to heal time to me, and I'll remark.
Again tonight, I'm sorry.
Has somebody told you you can't do that, Mr. Mayor?
I just know, I've just decided five minutes is good, I think, at this point.
Are you? I thought you were all about transparency here.
Listen, if Mr. Fivers would like to speak, I'd love to hear it, but we've got a busy agenda, a lot of people to talk tonight, though, so thank you.
Yeah, I don't think you guys are about transparency, Mr. Mayor. And that's what's got you suffering, you're a lot of problems, you know that?
Thank you. Mr. Kylie Fivers, please.
I'm good.
Good, thank you. All right, Rebecca Wallace, please.
I'm here about public records again. I came on the 18th, I think it was, of November, and talked about lack of communication and how I had sent an email asking for clarification about what I'm supposed to give back as far as keywords and dates, and I still have not received a response about that. Like, you know, for example, I'm waiting for that response so I can find out, I'm going to put in a public records request about how much money that we, as a city, have spent outside council for each fiscal year for the past three years. I can't exactly, I mean, if I did that, I could, but I would like to do it in the format that the city would like to see, so I'm not wasting any more time asking for public records. So I sent another kind of reminder email on the 5th of December saying, hey, I addressed David Klein, I haven't received a response back yet in asking for clarification of what the keywords are and what specifically needs to be filed. Can I have an example? I sent that email on the 13th of November, because on the 6th of November, I submitted a request for, I wanted to know how many tort claims were filed, naming Truman Stone as a defendant, from July of 2017 to the present. That's pretty specific. I gave dates, I gave a name, I gave a topic, and they sent me back on the 13th, so I put that in on the 6th, in person. They sent me back on the 13th, something saying, we need more clarification, we need keywords, and we need dates. What exactly are you asking for? Because I thought I was pretty specific. And I was very specific in my email on the 13th of November, saying, what are you wanting me to give you? Then I responded again on the 5th of December, which is almost a month, saying, David, please send me what you want me for. I have a public records request that I would like to submit, and I would like to do it within the purview of what it is that you want to see from a citizen. Now, I find that it's very frustrating that I came to council on the 18th or 19th, or whatever it was, of November, and spoke on this very exact subject, and I'm coming back again two weeks later to talk about it again. Now, I'm going to go off of the public records comments, because I think I've said enough about that. I find it distressing and frustrating that we've hired, as a city, a pro-ten city manager that has run out of purrs hours. How in the world, I mean, look at the disaster that we had over the last three city managers. You would think that we need full-time attention to our city, because that's what our city requires, is full-time city management. But yet we have a pro-ten city manager who ran out of purrs hours and has to pass the key over to somebody who's not designed to be a city manager. They're not. Now, thank goodness that we are looking at a new city manager come January, but we have an entire month with all this amazing litigation that's happening and things coming out of the city, public records requests that are being ignored. Why? Because the ball's being dropped? It's a public records request. The ball is not supposed to be dropped, at least on something that important. So is anybody getting, oh, by the way, there's no out-of-office reply. You send an email to David Klein, you don't get an out-of-office reply. You don't get a, by the way, I'm not here, and if you don't hear from me, please email Matt's up. That's not there. So how are we supposed to come to the city for information or not be frustrated as citizens with everything that's going on if we can't even get organization within the city? Thank you for listening to me. I know that I've heard you're frustrated with my public records or my temper.
All right, Mark Colby, please.
I want to yield the main gun.
Let me try. Mr. Dunn, how's, can we compromise? How's about that? Can you give it to me?
What is compromise, Mr. Mayor?
How's about two and a half minutes?
Fine, that's, that's.
In the interest of transparency.
Thank you.
I always liked to settle cases, I couldn't rush rights in the law. Now, as, when I ended up, when I quit, I was talking about your insurance rates, etc. Now, all of you obviously know, you've got three claims that have been, tort claims have been filed by, and I, this is no disrespect, Brooks, Casey, without using their first names, to cause victory, okay? The first questions out of your mouth to your advisors should be, how much money are we looking at to defend these, what's our risk on these cases? Because I want to tell you, regardless of what people are telling you, your risk on the sex harassment case is out of sight. I don't care what somebody says, you got no, somebody told, some people told you had no problems on patent, etc. You got burned on that pretty bad, okay? And you kept your losses some, but you got burned, okay? You're going to get burned real bad on this case with Brittany Jeffries, because not only did the city not do anything to solve the problem over four and a half years, you've got retaliation situations. And I don't care what this Barry Elster said as far as giving the city a free pass on all this, as far as then all the hierarchy of the city taking care of this situation. If that was the case, this situation wouldn't have gone on for four and a half years if they had taken care of it. And lastly, any attorney that knows what they're talking about will tell you, on a case like this, when you've got retaliation by city employees and there's plenty of evidence of retaliation, that drives up the value of this claim exponentially, period. So I would think, I don't know how many times you've got to get burned to understand how much money is the city going to pay out, and how much are our, assuming the insurance company pays it, how much are our rates going to increase? I mean, that's pretty paramount. Now, let me just address one other thing. The report came out from Barry Elster on Brooks and Todd Mickie and Casey, and it basically exonerated Brian and Dave Brooks. I think it should have exonerated Jeff. They were offended that he told OSP to investigate the credibility of the complaint. But at any rate, you had the opportunity, you had the opportunity to put out an exoneration rather than adopt a resolution that said, we're very concerned about this, etc. He knew at that point in time, early November, that you were, that they were exonerated. You should have put that out. Instead, you got this press release out there that said you were really concerned, etc., etc. I've never seen, and I know Brian Casey's been exonerated, I don't know whether, I've never seen anything from the city that says he's been exonerated as far as a press release, etc. I think that's a pretty low-ball situation how the city stands for. Okay, I compromise. Thank you, Mr. Jeffries.
All right, how's about Rebecca Swindle? Did I pronounce that correctly? I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. Hello, my name is Rebecca Swindle. I'm on the board for People Like Newburgh. We are a new organization in Newburgh. We've been around for just a little bit here. And our mission, People Like vision is a world where diversity is celebrated, people are respected, valued, and affirmed, inclusive of their sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender discretion. So our goal is to support educated advocates for LGBTQ folks and for those who want to learn how to be allied. And because of that, as a People Like board member and mother of a transgender son here in Newburgh, I would like to ask the council to consider flying a rainbow pride flag for the month of June. The reason I ask for June is because June is considered Pride Month. That is because about 50 years ago, the Stone Law riots occurred, and though you may know what that is, just briefly, 50 years ago, the police in Manhattan raided some day bars, and it initiated some riots and protests, which launched the modern work of fighting for LGBTQ rights. Those fights are still ongoing. There has been a lot of legal progress made, and as you know, four years ago, just four years ago, gay marriage became the law for us. There's still a long way to go. And flying a flag is one way to increase visibility and safety for those in our community. I brought a quote from the Warden State Police Chief Tim Bux. The state police understands that LGBTQ citizens and those perceived as LGBTQ are regrettably overrepresented in bullying, harassment, and hate crimes. This includes schoolchildren all the way up to adulthood. We know this harassment and hate crime victimization often goes under report by the LGBTQ community. He was speaking about the state police's decision to cover a patrol car in pride flags for the month of June. And I thought that was a great example and one that we could follow here in Newburgh. Some of the things that flying a flag in Newburgh could do for our community. We would be recognizing that LGBTQ people exist in our community and that we value and respect them. We could maintain that our community will not stand for hate and tolerance, that we understand that LGBTQ folks are still marginalized, they're suffering from victimization, and that we stand with them. And as a member of People Like Newburgh, I have sat with students and adults and parents with youth who have children in the hospital or harming themselves under victimization, that they have suffered suicide attempts from young children all the way up to adults. And this is in our community. We could show our determination to honor diversity and to honor safety for the diverse. As you know, the vision of Newburgh is that we will cultivate a healthy, safe environment where citizens can work, play, and grow in a friendly dynamic, a diverse community valuing partnerships and opportunity. I feel that this expression would follow beautifully within that vision, and Newburgh does have the opportunity right now to recognize that this is a group that needs us to reach out and say, you're welcome here, you're valued here, and you are safe. So I ask you to fly the flag. Any questions for us?
Hearing none. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here.
Thanks, Luca.
All right, I believe that is what I've got for public comments, except for one that's specific to a particular item on the agenda. So let's move that into the consent calendar. I think we've heard that we'll pull off a couple of these anyway. Patrick, did you want to pull 9B?
Oh, yeah, I would like to pull 9B.
Okay, and I think I'd like to pull 9B just for a question, actually.
Oh, is there, are we moving on to the other two?
Yeah, why don't we bring the other two?
Okay. The, sorry, B and, what was the other one? D.
D.
Okay.
All right, the consent calendar, a size of 9B and 9D. Anyone?
I will make a motion to a consent calendar. You really know what you're on.
And Patrick with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The consent calendar of those two items passes. Thank you. All right. Public hearings, correct. All right. Moving on to the public hearing, resolution 2019 3626, and this is a quasi-judicial land use public hearing. All right, so we are opening the public hearing, and the purpose is recommending a gamble kind of approval, propose partition of 26, 27, 16 North East Roberts Lane. All right, the testimony procedure, we will generally hear from staff, and then we will go through. All right, the testimony procedure, we will generally hear from staff, and then we will go through proponents, opponents, and pencil for opponents rebuttal if needed. And I see that Rob, this Moleson is here. All right, with that, Mr. Stone.
Uh, you need...
Extentions, liars, ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction, anyone? Hearing done. Mr. Stone.
Certain announcements are required before the commencement of a quasi-judicial land use hearing. This hearing deals with the land use decision of a recommendation to Yamhill County regarding a proposed partition within the urban growth boundary at 2716 Northeast Roberts Lane. The announcement required by the Oregon Revised Statute, ORS 197763, is as follows. Applicable substantive criteria for the decision are listed in Exhibit C to the resolution beginning on page eight on the electronic version. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described above or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation that you believe applies to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue concludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The applicant who has the burden of proof may have at least seven days after the record is closed to submit final written argument. At the close of the testimony portion of the hearing, the applicant will have to decide if the applicant wishes to submit further written argument. The definitions under ORS 197763 for argument means assertions and analysis regarding the satisfaction or violation of legal standards or policy believed relevant by the proponent to a decision. Argument does not include facts. Evidence means facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or non-compliance with the standards believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. If the applicant wishes to make a submission, no further deliberation shall take place tonight. If the applicant waives that right, the council may proceed with deliberation, and that concludes the announcement.
Thank you. All right, the staff report, please.
Thank you, the councilors. My name is Cheryl Keynes, Senior Planner at City of Newburgh. And so the site, what we're looking for you tonight is just for a recommendation for a partition in the, outside of the city's boundaries, outside of the city's limits, but inside the urban growth boundary. And so this site is located on the northeast side of, of the city. So it's on the northeast side of the city, and what the arrow is pointing there. And it's in, again, the urban growth boundary. It is near the Spring Brook District. So a lot of the Spring Brook properties that are to be, a lot of the parts were planned on the case in this site. It is at 27, 2716 Northeast Roberts Lane. It's about two acres in size, and it is, uh, Yamhill County is on the LDR1, very low density residential, minimum acre, minimum one acre size for the partition itself. It does have a city comprehensive plan designation of low density residential, and so at some point annexed into the city, it would be assigned a zoning of R1, which is our low density zone. This site plan here shows just how the site would be divided into two parcels. Block one is where the existing single-family home is located. And then block two, which is to the west, is where a new single-family home would be constructed on the site. And then this plan here shows a future development plan. So part of the agreement that we have with Yamhill County is that development can occur in areas that are urban growth boundary or urban reserve areas, but city council does need to provide a recommendation for that to occur. And we look at different criteria that talk about, basically, that anything that's being done now or approved now is not preventing that land of, to be developed at urban densities if and when it's brought into the city's boundary. And so the applicant is required to show how that urban development would occur. And so this part shows a potential way for that to occur, which would be a new public street that would go out to Rogers Lane, that would come into to serve the two existing homes, and then several, I think it's like five other future homes. And so it would be, it would not be served by city utilities under the partition, but if it were subdivided in the future and annexed, then it would be easily served with the city, city facilities. So this partition does not preclude future urban development. It is the intent, so per the criteria, I'll just go back a little bit. The intent is to recommend that the county only allow development in the urban growth boundary that is limited scope and consisted of the future urban development of the property. And so the applicant has shown that that is true. And so the staff have put flying Exhibit A, the staff's recommended at city council, approved Resolution 2019-3626, which recommends that Yamhill County further request a two-block partition at 26, 2716 Northeast Roberts Lane. Are there any questions?
Any questions, please? Okay, I think we're good. Let's see, public testimony. Mr. Moleson, did you want to provide public testimony?
I just wanted to get my name in in case there were questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, let's see. Any other questions for staff? We said no, right? We're okay at that point. Letters or comments, Sue?
No.
None received. Okay, let's close the public testimony portion of the hearing and the legal announcements. Please, Mr. Stone.
We need to inquire whether the applicant waives the seven days.
I just repeat the...
So you, you would have seven days to submit any additional written, uh, argument?
Yes, I'll wait it.
Okay, the applicant indicates that's waived. If the decision is not made tonight and continued to another date, the record could be reopened at that later date by motion of the council. Therefore, do not assume no further evidence will be taken. If the decision is made tonight, the council has the authority to reconsider the decision following proper procedure. This motion to reconsider is usually required to be made at the next meeting of the city council. The fact that the council could reconsider their decision does not affect the length of time for appeal of that decision. And that concludes the announcement.
All right, any other questions of Cheryl? Hearing none. All right. All right, folks, time to deliberate.
I move to adopt Resolution number 20019-3626. Second.
At least the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Resolution 2019-3626 passes. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Mr. Moleson.
Thank you.
And you're still there, Cheryl? Still, well, on that note, you'll still hear for the next couple of days, correct? Okay, before we get into the next one, I think we want to thank you for your service and wish you the very best in your travels to the, to the scopes. So thank you, thank you. All right, on to ordinance 2019-2854. Uh, let's see, what am I doing? All right, all right, this is ordinance number 2019-2854. An ordinance vacating the North Center Street right-of-way, north of East Fulton Street, adjacent to Yamhill County Tax Lots, 3217 CB 00500, and on, within the corporate city limits of Newburgh. Conflicts of interest or abstentions, folks? Hearing none. The staff report, please, Cheryl.
Thank you, Lieutenant Commander, City Council members. Cheryl Keynes, Senior Planner for the record. Friendsview Manor and LLC, and we have Living Trust have applied to, or have requested that the public right-of-way for North Center Street and north of East Fulton Street may make. The purpose is to allow more flexibility for the second phase of development, development at University, Friendsview University Building, which right now is accessed off of what used to be Cherry Street, before it was made. And, and is would be north of the Center Street right-of-way vacation. The city does not have any applicable criteria for right-of-way vacations, and so the, we base our decisions on ORS 271-130, which has to do with vacations. The city council approved a resolution back in October initiating the hearing for this vacation, and that was under Resolution 2019-3609. So North Center Street is, is located pretty much in the center of town. It's north of the George Fox University. And again, west of most of the Friendsview Manor property developments on Fulton Street. This is just a very little photo, kind of showing where Fulton and Center Street come together. And then this map is based on the ORS criteria, which talks about that you have to have so many people that have ownership of so much property inside the affected area that consent to the vacation. And in this case, the adjacent property owners are pretty much Friendsview Manor LLC, except for Tax Lot 1000, which is the northwest corner of Fulton and Center, and that's all by the Cadillary Trust. But this affected area goes 200 feet, well, actually, it goes to a parallel street with a maximum of 200 feet, so your rectangle is going to be at least 200 feet wide. And then 400 feet in each direction from the terminus of the vacation. And so you've got this rectangle that's 400 by 200 feet. And so everyone in there is considered to be within the affected area. Consideration when you're vacating public right-of-way is knowing what kind of utilities are in the public right-of-way. And so this map shows that there's a water line, which is a green line, and, and a water line here. And then the green line is wastewater. There is no storm in North Center. The storm runs kind of to the, to the east. It looks like it goes across private property. And so consideration is to make sure that the city can still get in there to maintain those facilities and making repairs and maintenance as needed. There were no public comments received for this particular right-of-way application. But we did get some comments from some of the private service providers that are located within that public right-of-way, which would be Portland General Electric and Frontier both have facilities in that right-of-way. And so they wanted to make sure that again, in the future, they can get into those areas in the Canadian and making repairs. And so the ordinance that's before you tonight will include easements. So the applicant is required to report easements for the city and those private utilities and those private services and the, and emergency vehicles for access. So there'll be, along with the, the right-of-way vacation, there'll also be these requirements of easements that would be granted to the city and to these private utility providers in order to do that maintenance in the future. There is, again, all of the criteria and the staff report and findings are found in Exhibit A that support the ordinance, but this is just sort of a summary here and some of the ones that are actually applicable to this particular case. One is notice has to be provided in order for everyone to, to notify this is happening and then give them time for public comment. So we did post this in a graphic for two weeks, and it was spread by the library. And then it was posted on site and it was mailed to the neighbors by the applicants. Written consent was given by at least two-thirds of the, so apparently two-thirds of the land was in that affected area. So the owners of at least two-thirds of that land have consented by signing a petition that was included in the application to allow this vacation to happen. And then typically, I'll take it back one, couple of slides. So when you got this 40-foot, the right-of-way is 40 feet wide and about 200 feet in length. And so typically, for ORS, when it's vacated, down the center line, which is go 20 feet to the property to the west and 20 feet to the property to the, to the east. But in this case, Cadillary Trust has signed a sale agreement with Friendsview Manor to allow them to purchase that portion that will be going to, would be attaching to their property. And so the ordinance is written, ordinance is not valid for, is not effective for certain days. So the ordinance is written so that Friendsview and Cadillary Trust can get the deeds recorded for them to have the rights to purchase that land. And so then they're willing to have to come back and do a lot of investment to make that 20 feet part of Friendsview Manor. So the ordinance is written enough to reflect that. So based on the findings, city staff recommends that ordinance number 2019-2854 vacating a section of North Center Street. Northeast Fulton Street is vacated, but also has access easements and utility easements for city and franchise individuals and utilities. Are there any questions upstairs?
Sue, any late arriving public testimony?
No.
I have none here as well. All right, we will close the public testimony portion. So recommendations from staff, please.
Heronation is to adopt ordinance number 2019-2854.
Discussion, folks.
That was a process question. Ordinance is scary. Do we wave the first reading or have we accepted reading? How does that all, can you refresh my memory?
This is, uh, I don't know if you have the right page. Yeah, because it's an ordinance, the council rules say that it requires two readings unless the council by motion waives the second reading, in which case you can adopt a new one.
Are we ready for that?
I think so.
Okay, I move that we waive the second reading on ordinance number 2019-2854.
Second.
At least for the second. All right, all in favor of waiving the second reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. The second reading passed, or the waiver of the second reading passes. All right, further discussion for a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move we adopt ordinance number 2019-2854 and directly turn the hearing to read by now.
Second.
Ordinance number 20019-2854. An ordinance vacating the North Center Street right-of-way north of East Fulton Street, adjacent to Yamhill County Tax Lots, 3217 CB Charlie Bravo, dash 00500, dash 01000, dash 01500, dash 01600, and dash 2, uh, 02600, within the corporate city limits of Newburgh, Oregon, retaining a public and private utility and access easements for the street in the vacant.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of ordinance 2019-2854, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Ordinance 2019-2854 passes. All right, and Cheryl, thank you so very much. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I request a five-minute recess?
Sure, five-minute recess it is. It's very convenient at eight thirty. All right, this session back into order, and new business, Resolution two nineteen thirty six twenty nine, Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor Rogers, Dr. Rux. Your planning, building, community engagement, historic conservation, economic development, and something else. I like to bring on this community development, right? Urban development. It's like part of the whole matter. The, so, the issue before you is the legislation in two thousand nineteen passed House Bill two thousand and one, in that bill, there is one sentence, very evil language, that requires that for accessory dwelling units, you can no longer require an off-street parking space. Second provision in there says you cannot require that either you have the unit to be owner occupied. So when we put together our accessory dwelling unit regulations, we'd already addressed the one about owner occupancy. Planning Commission recommended council agree to require one off-street parking space for any P U. So we need to change our development code to eliminate that particular provision. So the new state law goes into effect on January first of two thousand twenty. You may ask, what will we do in the meantime? We will implement the state law as it is written, so we will not require an off-street parking space come January one, but we do need to clean up the code to be in alignment with the state regulations. So with that, staff is looking for council to adopt Resolution two nineteen thirty six twenty nine to initiate the development code.
And this is just the start of the process, right?
This is the start of a couple of years worth of work that's been outlined by House Bill two thousand and one, two thousand and two.
Awesome. All right, questions for, for you? Here goes the planning permission, right?
Goes the planning permission, so we'll put together, I will put together the proposal with the planning permission for public carry and developer recommendation. That recommendation will come back to council, we'll hold the second public carry for your decision.
Any other questions?
I mostly had a statement. As I read through this, I felt like I was going to channel Mayor Bob for a minute and say something about home rule, but I'm not entirely sure what that would be, so I just wanted to get that on the record. I'm sure if Mayor Bob was here, he'd say something about home rule and the state dictating land use on the, on the, so.
Anyone else? Well, for my two cents then, we're putting it out, and I think if there's anything that can increase the, you know, how many accessory dwelling units we actually see in Newburgh? Um, four.
We've actually seen enough with the new regulations, we've seen an uptick in both the inquiries for accessory dwelling units and actual applications.
Good, very good, awesome. All right, any other, any other discussion or questions for Mr. Rux? How's my motion, someone?
Mayor, I'd like to be cautioned that we adopt Resolution number, whoops, two thousand nineteen three six two nine. I needed to be quick.
And we got a second. Patrick on the second. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of Resolution two nineteen thirty six twenty nine, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, resolution passes. All right, for those following along on your agenda, we are now moving back to item nine B, RCA, uh, the RCA, two thousand nineteen thirty six twenty, RCA Resolution to Hire. And questions? Councilor Johnson, you want to start off?
I mostly just had a statement I wanted to read, explaining my vote on this one. I, as a rule, I try and make it a practice not to be at odds with staff, or even, you know, I think asking pointed questions and looking into things that you're curious about is fine, but on this one, I had kind of a, a moment of clarity, and that is, you know, I find it frustrating that on the same night we're approving a settlement for an inadequate hiring process, we're potentially, you know, making, you know, we're getting involved in the personnel process by doing this, which is within our right to the charter and with the pro town city manager, we have to do this. What makes me uncomfortable, and it's just me, and I don't expect anybody else to agree with me, is that now my name is going on that I endorsed the hiring process for these three employees. And quite honestly, I don't feel comfortable with people. It's not a comment about staff, it's a comment about the situation we find ourselves in and the fact that I don't feel uncomfortable enough with the hiring process for these three to know whether that was a good process or a bad process. And so just for my own personal implication, I'm going to be voting no on this because I don't feel comfortable.
I understand the council's concerns, and I think, you know, again, as I mentioned earlier in my report, largely because of the conversation that Patrick and I had, we do need to do some assessment of our practices with respect to the outcome of that litigation. I, I don't tie it back to this particular action, I think this is about good business that we need to do. These are all in the engineering department, but worst departments, and that's three employees that they desperately need to, desperately, they certainly need to continue their operational level, to their operations at a level that serve our citizens, and then the type of these people that just, what's that, that makes it that more difficult.
We, we don't, you know, by and large, as I, you know, as I have done the sort of this, sort of a rough assessment of where we are, I mean, our, our personnel practices are laid out fairly well pursuant to our, our, our employment manual and your past practices. I think really the more fundamental question that I need to explore is what do we do here to those in the course of, you know, of work or not, that results in a poor outcome, a very poor outcome of litigation. So I, I really see those things as two different creatures. I think you have basically stayed on the yard and processed in place. Whether we adhere to it is a different question, but I think we have, you know, a process that enables us to veridominate that behavior in hiring pretty quickly by emergency checks and balances. So I would basically tell you, you know, I appreciate you, you, you know, sharing, you know, highlighting the issue, making it, you know, open this up for a little more transparent conversation, but I would urge you to approve this particular hire, even certainly any real city manager in this city wouldn't be coming to you, and it wouldn't be open for reflection.
And just for clarification, the only reason I'm bringing this up is because I didn't want to vote against this entire initiative, so.
And you say checks and balances, how, and just for information's sake, I guess, how evolved, you know, have the department enhanced with hires of this type?
So the typical, the typical process here, the one that we've deployed, speaking rather of G M, not a hundred percent of the time, is that the hiring, the director of the department, unless it's in a direct report, will typically delegate that to a committee of votes that, you know, may bring the ship, you know, the best line on the candidates. First off, the H R department will look at the, the applications, weigh that down to a, a variable number, frequently they will, you know, even score those applications and residents, obviously put some, some meaningful relationship between top to bottom, then, but at some point that gets cut off to a review level, then those are given over to this review, and the director has not been involved in that, those interviews by and large, unless, again, I think that's a direct report, and I can't speak to that being always the case, but that seems to be the, the, the general practice. And then finally, from that process will come out, top one, top two, folks that are certainly mentally, you know, able to do the job, and it's a question, what is the fit, you know, for that, for that department, for that director? Is that a?
I, I echo Patrick's concerns, and I appreciate David's response in terms of checks and balances. The problem is those checks and balances were there when this happened the last time, and I don't feel like we've gotten a clear response to the council about what went wrong and how that has been and is being addressed. And so I do echo those concerns about signing off on a hiring process that we know failed at least one time, and that we haven't had specific information about how that doesn't happen again.
Anyone else?
As the newest guy, I should be most concerned, maybe, and I agree with these two to a point, but I also understand we can't just stop operating, and we are going to expect hiring to be done better, and oversight of employees is going to be better, so I get where the meat is, but I think we need to keep operating and keep also expecting to see this.
Can we anticipate, can we anticipate at some point to receive an update, how hiring practices will improve, or at least addressing?
I, I expect to come back in January and do some follow-up work. I'm, as you know, I'm capped out at this point, and I don't think it's fair for me to just put that on hand. I have several ideas. I've talked to the mayor a little bit about my thinking about where we, you know, where we go on a couple of, I think we can do a couple of, I could report back to you with, you know, one of your meetings in January and tell you what improvements either have been made, I think will be noted or listed, or what is, what is, what is involved. Part of that is, you know, I, you know, we are hiring the city manager, and I don't want to jump the gun on a new city manager, say what we should do, and then find out that city manager would like to participate in that decision, I think, for us, so. I'm hopeful that by the sixteenth, you will have a candidate of choice, you will, I will know who that person is, and I'll be able to collaborate with that person, say, here's what I'm thinking about, you know, closing out, you know, my presence here and turning over to you, and some of the changes that I'd like to undertake before you arrive, so that they don't have to start from scratch with those. I can't really provide you a whole lot more information in public, but that's, that's my basis on that.
How, I mean, is it, are the, are these people waiting to hear whether they've been, are going to be offered a job? Is it, I mean, is there a sense of urgency that this needs to be?
Well, I, I don't know, because I, I just, you know, I just today had this conversation, or thinking yesterday, had this conversation, that, that this was going to be called for consent, and I was not in it, I started that conversation with Eric. Jay, I don't know if you know that you're on your apartment, but.
Yeah, the employees cannot start without council ratifying, and your next meeting's in, in January, so like the operator one, we've been down an operator one of the wastewater plant for, for some time now, so we continue to be down that employee. There's also an engineering administrative assistant part-time position, which we currently don't have one there, and then, because Greg went full-time in I T, and also there's a technician in engineering that is going to assist with a bunch of the pavement projects and A D A ramps and that sort of thing, so holding it off just means we're not processing as much work.
I, I would suggest you do, that nothing that we're going to do in the next month is going to affect the decision to hire these people, so all you're, sort of really, if I, first off, I meant hire now, you put at risk that these people will find different jobs than one or whatever, and I, nothing, nothing about withholding this authorization is going to change the impetus to make some, some changes, you know, in processing.
You know, I, one thing, I guess, yeah, I, I guess for my two cents, I, you know, I agree with Gene that we can't just grind to a halt, you know, we need to keep functioning, but I think I, I think I would like to get, you know, even if, even if we go through and approve this tonight, I would like to get a review of the process for each person, and maybe that's just a quick little audit to say, these are the people that reviewed it, this was the steps taken, and a summary of that, and that way at least we, you know, have some comfort even after the fact that, that the processes were being followed.
Do you want that, would you do that, and do you want that to happen when it comes to me, or do you see me as separately as an after-action report on the happen this evening?
Either way, I have no preference, but to, to, either way works for me.
I can give an update on, from the director's point of view, so these employees don't report directly to me, so the operator one will be reporting to Craig Pack, who's the wastewater treatment plant superintendent. Craig put together an interview panel, they were very successful in the number of applicants, I think there's like fifteen people, they obviously went through all the applications, they narrowed it down, because you can't interview, as you guys know, on the city council thing, you only interview about five people, so they went through rated applications, got it down to four in this instance, and then they interviewed four people and selected this person as the most qualified for that particular position through interview panel. And it was the same thing for the, the two engineering folks, that it's an interview panel, the direct report supervisor typically isn't on the interview panel, that is, it's, you know, third-party people that know what the person could be doing, obviously, but they're not directly involved with supervising or making the selection, so hopefully that helps some on those, and it might be helpful in the future to say just in the background what the process was for each.
Can I ask a, can I ask a one question? Did any of the interview panel know any of the candidates?
Not in this instance, no. But you're right, that, that can happen in the past, it could be family, friends, that sort of thing. Typically, I wouldn't encourage a person to be on the interview panel at, at that point.
Yeah, and I think that's just information that would be, you know, good to know, just to make sure, yeah, just to make sure. So, all right, folks, it was your pleasure.
I'm, I'm just going to say, I'm trying really hard not to be super boring, so.
Might as well be, because.
Well, no, I mean, I'm just not, I'm not going to, hey.
Again.
I just do not feel comfortable putting my name on a process that I know had pretty horrible outcome a couple of years ago, and the fact that fifteen people apply, I don't know what those, those applicants look like, I don't know what their backgrounds are, I don't know if there are any, I, I just, there are a lot of questions for me, and if you're going to ask me for my name on something, I want to have a little more information than what I have.
Nice to see you. But to be clear, how many other offers made since this?
There aren't, and if this had not, and I'm being transparent in saying that if this had not come with the settlement thing, I don't think I would quit to do that, and that's, I was reading the packet, and I went, wait a second, what am I doing? I'm putting my name on hires that could potentially, a lot of the same players are involved with these, these interview deals, um, for setting up the process. You know, I, I'm not comfortable with it.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, can I come in again, Mayor? I, I do want to be cautionary as well, again, I, you know, I understand this conversation tonight, and that's because I'm the interim city manager, and you've had a, not really surprised with respect to that, that litigation outcome, but again, there's nothing about your being involved in personnel, H R matters that makes any kind of sense in order to consist with your charter. So to the extent that you understand our, other than this, tonight, when you have a city manager, you're going to back out of employees that are hired, or the process, you know, the overall process being performed.
No, 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 no. Tonight, you're asking me to.
Well, I understand that, as interim, I have to ask you.
And I don't know what that process is or how it's been fixed since that location. Now, I, I don't really want to get into that in public, but what I'm saying is, I'm not comfortable in it, okay? And I'm, that's it, period.
All right, anyone else? Would someone like to make a motion to at least get the discussion moving in a direction? Would you, I guess to approve Resolution two nineteen thirty six twenty?
Okay, well, I knew that we adopt Resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirty six twenty, authorizing to the manager, pro town to appoint representatives, candidates to positions that was too tall.
You have a second?
Can I have a second?
Yep, oh, there you are. How are you? Elizabeth with a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Two, two, one, two. Okay. You got that soon, did you get the count? Okay. All right then. The resolution 2019-3628 passes. So with that, we would like to welcome Luke Smith, Public Works Operations Operator One, which of his names, Zenaida Bouganon, Administrative Assistant Engineering Part-Time, and Christian Manasco, Engineering Division One, Part-Time to the City of Detroit. Thank you. All right, next, on to nine D, Resolution 2019-3624. I asked for this one and just basically, Jay, the question that I have, and I don't know if others have any, is it in the streets to be repaired? I saw at least one or two that are in the greens. And I don't recall greens being that old. So I'm wondering why we're fix, sorry, what am I, but I, I'm just wondering why we're fixing those streets in the greens.
So, hi, my name is Jay Larson, Public Works Director, and Merry Christmas, I've got my time. You don't get to wear things like this very often, okay?
Only 25 days.
So anyways, we have a, an RCA and resolution tonight, and this is to authorize the city manager pro temp to enter a professional service agreement with HTH Consulting Engineers so they can design the, this year's pavement projects. So the question is, and HTH goes through and does a bunch of technology and surveying and designing ramps and backing up piping and all sorts of things. The question is, is the greens project. And so there's a lot of streets up there that are nearing, you know, the 12-year mark or 14-year. That's when you got to get on with the crack and/or a story seal. So I haven't looked at the list here, but if you go to page two, picking out the Greens Avenue from Fernwood Drive to Fernwood Road, that is a crack and story seal project. I was actually the evaluator that went and evaluated that project. We had teams of people that went out, that happened to be one that I went out and looked. So what you want to do is keep the water out of the pavement before the water gets into the base rock and then starts cracking the pavement out, allocating it out. You want to get on that, you want a crack seal with big cracks. And then the story seal, this, it fills in the microcracks and it buys you some more time before you got to either overlay, all roads will be overlaid or ground and end light someday unfortunately, but it buys you some more time at a quarter of the cost of an overlaying.
Satisfies my question? Any other questions for, for Jay?
I just wanted to clarify that I did send Paul an email asking about tough and making sure the 30% were sold out to streets that were below a certain level of PCI index. He wrote me back, very robust, very email, mentioned naming that to me, and since it's getting late, I'm not going to.
We are meeting, we're, we're exceeding the 30%, so.
All right, anything else on Resolution 2019-3624? All right, how's about a motion?
We're not motioning for something.
No, I know. Slow trigger, slow trigger motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that we, that we adopt Resolution 29-3620, that?
Yeah.
26, 3624, Resolution authors, city manager pro temp, entering a professional service agreement with HTH Consulting Engineers, decides to use 2020 pivot for revitalization maintenance project.
Same. All right, any further, just, I kind of just handed this to you, I don't know why I was handing it on. Any, any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, Resolution 29-3624 passes. Okay, let's move on to issue tracker. Okay, so two that I heard tonight, what do you want to do? We've got the P flag, request to fly the, the flag, and we've got public records.
David, were we gonna, we weren't putting public comments on the issue tracker anymore? Just if council wants that.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking if we wanted something on issue tracker.
With respect to the public record request, I mean, the suit process is quite a few and this one, of course, has been a little bit more complicated. There's been a lot more communication than you, than what you've heard about here. If you'd like, I'll, I'll have some volunteer suit and this, we can put together what we have, as far as knowledge on that one, what, what we expect as outcomes and get back to you with some kind of report. Susan will be happy, yeah, I think, thinking about her new year, but that's certainly doable, but I think by and large, it has been managed, the information you're telling us, I guess, entirely accurate, a little far from. And so I, I don't know what we're, we're doing, we're, you know, we obviously may have due deadlines that we have to meet. And I think we're meeting those in communication. There's a, there's a lot of communication, a lot, she hasn't been happy with all the results, like the denial, the feedback requests. So that hasn't helped, you know, the reception on our end. So I, I don't know what you're asking for, if you want to have more detailed reporting, we can put that, certainly.
No, I mean, for me, I just, because I don't know what the requirements are to respond to public records requests or timelines and all that. If there's one, if there's a cheat sheet, or don't go to the length of doing something, if there's something that already exists.
After the last meeting, I sent you all a little response on, on David and I's conversation and attached a PowerPoint that I teach staff that explains how the process works.
That's right, well, I clearly didn't pay much attention. Most, probably, I didn't pay attention.
Do you want to dedicate some, some hours as you're studying session with your, with your city managers on board as well to recap or to revisit the whole process of public records requests, but that?
No.
We got people saying, no.
I'm not sure.
No, in heck, no, no, in heck, no.
I totally agree that it's a worthy, I am not saying that, I just, I, I think I would like to look at the public.
Yes, yes, okay. So what I'm hearing is that public records is not on to issue tracker. What about the P flag?
I want that on here.
Me too. I would like that, I would like that on.
And go please.
I left that up several months ago with former city manager and didn't go anywhere. So I would love to have more discussion about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Sorry for, sorry I made you do that.
No, that's, the reason that I wanted to, on issue tracker, and I really appreciate it, Rebecca's comment, is because this was brought up, I think, right before issue tracker started. And our takeaway was that the council was going to work or delegate to some group, even maybe P flag, to come up with a proposed sort of idea of what type of flags could be flown, because this needs to be something that we could spread for if additional requests came in to fly them additional ones. Because we need a separate area.
Yeah, you might need some standards.
And Doug, if some standards, who decides what flags to fly? If this goes under the sign orders? And so Doug gets it.
One of my titles in my record I'm.
Yeah.
You know, when this flyer came up in May of last year about flying the flag, if you remember, some of you were here at the time, some of you were, is, you know, in 30 days, there's a lot of discussions that need to occur internally. And, you know, flag polls can always support so many flags. Which flag polls do we have? We got to the issue about, well, what flags could you fly, which ones could you not fly? Because we have the US flag, Oregon flag, and POW already. And so there's work by Russ.
What was the last one?
There's some more POW flags. So if you go, if you go to City Hall, it's required. And so there's a number of issues. So by having a quest come in December, if it's something council wants to do, that puts it in queue for staff to be able to look at all the steps that we need to go through to come back with some kind of proposal in order to be in a position if you want to do something in June.
Sounds good. Yeah, can we do that, that worked? Okay. Lots of more flags, but still have to see your flag, remember, folks, let's not, not forget about that one.
So consistent with what the guidelines I gave you, I take that to be, since it's council, it's on the list.
Yeah, thank you so much, appreciate that. All right. Any other council business before we go back into, yes?
I would like to say something about public comments. Having lots of people here is good. Having lots of public comments is great. It means that people are engaged, good, bad, indifferent. It means that people are engaged and paying attention to what we're doing, what the city staff is doing. I think that's great. I don't think we should have to police this, but if somebody has gotten their time and are sitting in the audience and making comments that are loud enough for everyone to hear and being disrespectful of somebody else that's sitting there putting themselves on the line to talk about something that's important to them, then they should be policing themselves or they should not be showing up here. So if, if people can conduct themselves as adults and be respectful of others, the more the merrier. But I don't want to have to interrupt someone here to act like a teacher saying, can you please not joke, laugh, make comments while somebody is sitting here talking to us about something that's important to them? Because you have gotten that respect yourself. So, and I know I'm preaching to the choir and, you know, people who moved here are not here anymore, but I just want to call attention to, this is not the first time it's happened. It's not like it's a one-off kind of thing. I think we've seen in the last few meetings, there have been these things happening in the audience and there have been people who are doing it more than others. And I really want a chance for other people who want to come and talk about things that are important to them to be respected to do that and not feel like they can't come and talk to us because they're not being respected during their time. So just my little soapbox for.
I greatly, yeah, I greatly appreciate that. And I, I was very close to saying something, but at the time it was seeming I was getting tense enough. But I think you're right, and I think I should probably at the beginning of each public comments session say, or during this, before the start of the meeting and say, listen, be respectful of the speakers if you have private conversations, they are an integral audience. And if they don't.
And not to channel their public intent.
Yes.
But that is what it is.
Yep, 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 yep. And, you know, we like, though I didn't want it to get more energized than it already was, but that's well taken.
And I have a high tolerance for people coming here and saying what they want about us and to us, but not others, but not someone else, not another community member that came here for the purpose of, of things that are important.
Sure. David?
So another thing you might consider, like I was on school war back in the, in Independence, and one of the policies they have, and it's not uncommon in other governments that I've worked for, is basically to say if it's about city staff, if it's about, you really don't have the right to come here publicly and criticize that. If you want to, you can take up with the city manager, but one, they're not in a position where they can defend themselves. It's unfair to them. You do a great job of my comment, you know, kudos to all of you for just staying quiet for all of that. But it's really a sort of one-sided diatribe, it's really unfair to the, to the staff and it's, you know, many, it's, you know, I don't want us to be partying to the sound of Steve Slender to be allowed to go on. So I just think, you know, you could have a policy in place that says, and actually we can do a little research on other folks that have that kind of policy, say, take up with the, the city manager, that's his job.
Well, the only thing that I would say to that is that, channeling my, my work, I had, I thought a lot about this and I, there has to be somewhere for people to go other than the city manager. There has to be. That is best practice in all, in all organizations. So to me, I've kind of allowed the previous statement from Joe that I, and so it's with Joe, to fly and then you as interim know that there's public comment. So if there's no public comment, then I want to know that Rick can be called upon or the council president can be called upon. There needs to be someone else that, if we get in a case like we have been in the past where the city manager has not taken action, then there needs to be that ability for someone to have an mediator other than an attorney.
I don't disagree with that. I guess, when we go off on the concept, if it's about the city manager, if it's about the city attorney, and in some regards, if it's about the city judge, those are your correct reports. So, you know, they're, we're sort of fair game. You know, we're paid well, we've got thick skin, and that's fine. But if it's about, but if it's about people that work for us, unless it's a complaint that we're not managing those people, and if it is, it ought to be discreetly, not done over the open mic, because again, you're, you know, you're, you're challenging people that are not in a position to defend themselves. And it's just totally unprofessional for any, any one of them to hold the mic and say, wait a minute, they're wrong, and let me take why they're wrong. So they know, the staff knows they can't do that. You, you don't get to really deal with it because you're not, they're not your direct reports. So really, either you're city manager or you're doing your job, per job, or isn't, in which case, that's a private conversation with that individual to say, you know, well, tell me about what's going on, why aren't you answering, or what is going on, you know, some of that. And it's a tough, it's a tough place to play, so because you're sort of, you cut out the whole HR thing altogether by virtue of your charter, which frankly is an invisibility of all tears. But, and this is your own taste for what you want to have, but I think you get run into a lot of confrontations here and a lot of inappropriate places and people conversations a lot.
I would propose that going forward, and this is not going to happen tonight, but there has to be a second U coming in when it comes to this. Like, there has to be another person that a staff member could go to if they're not feeling heard by the city manager. Whether that is, like I said, the mayor, council president, the city attorney, like someone has to be that additional person.
Of course.
Well, that's ridiculous, that they, that what, some of them work there because they don't, they're in one place to do it?
Your charter was pretty clear.
I'm gonna, then we're gonna have to talk about this because that is, I mean, is that normal for government to just have one person that you go to and then screw everything else and you file a lawsuit for creative thought and law and win?
Well, you go, you go to your supervisor, and then your supervisor's supervisor, and then to the city manager. And, and again, and I think if, I think it will get written that if you do not get satisfaction from the city manager, you can take it to council. That's the way it reads, I believe.
That's the way their employee manual reads.
Yeah, and then you take it, you take it up, you take it up further. So, but anyway, anyway, back to the, back to this thing about public comment. You know, at this mo, I think that may be something for downward. I feel, I feel, I mean, I feel very bad sitting here listening to people beat up staff.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's, I think, I'll be honest with you, I'll say in the public, I think it's cowardly to do it, but that's my opinion. Now, but I also believe that people have the right to do it. And it's a part of being a public employee, I'm sorry, you know, I think. And, you know, maybe, yeah, but to a certain degree, I mean, and we have to sit here and take it and be told, you guys aren't doing anything. And we have to sit here and take it. But that also shouldn't be misinterpreted to by us sitting here listening that somehow we agree or condone or anything what is being said. And that's, you know, that I think is the difference. But I, I would have a hard time if we found a way to loosen it at this moment in time.
Yeah, no, I, yes, and like I said, I think they should get to say whatever they want. I do. I have some ideas about how you better do that because frankly, I've not gotten one phone call or email from one of my constituents. We hear it here, we haven't been hearing it directly. But I think people should get to say whatever they want to say, and I'm fine with that. And I think we need to have thick skin around that, and, and I absolutely believe that. But I don't believe another citizen should have to sit here and listen to other people being disruptive and disrespectful while they are trying to address us.
And I totally agree, and I will, I will attempt to do better or keep it in order.
Well, like I said, it's, we shouldn't have to police that, they should be policing themselves, but, but if they can't, then I think, and I'm happy to do that as well.
Yeah, and remind me, if you don't hear it from me, remind me, say, keep the, keep the classroom in order, in order. So, all right, you good with that? Anybody else, anything else? Jay?
Is it too late to make, comment on the P flag situation?
No.
Just to disclose, I am a member, advocate of P flag, and they were very happy I was on the council, but it made it clear to them that I was a part of the victim, that I wasn't going to be pushing it. But I was very, and we also understand that there's different people in this town. Quaker Town respects veterans and people will find this difficult.
Quaker town respects veterans, and people will find this difficult. But, um, do you need to, I think what Rebecca said about safety, and which is part of our, that's the charter of the mission, is that's, that's the key point, safety. I mean, the main kind of people are gonna be troubled about it.
Anything else, folks?
What were you saying about the new project?
Yeah, you, you, of course.
I just wanted to say one thing, because the new work this week was amazing. And with the new marketing direction, rebranding of everything is awesome. Like, looks so fresh and clean, and, um, but still incorporates some, uh, historical element, which I love. And so I'm really hoping that the council loves it and that we can incorporate elements. I know that downtown dollar should really, I think, a part of the conversation as well. So, um, it has like a university, you're supposed to be a university field, which I love that. So, I'm really excited for you to see it whenever it goes.
Anyone else? What else we got? Um, I would like to give a, a big applause to Karen Tarmichael for putting together the Christmas tree lighting. Um, that was, that was, that was great, I don't know how many of you made it, but I, I know Jean did. You know, it was great, I mean, she had to follow Rita's sort of 20 or however many years of doing it, and I just thought she did a great job, even though I couldn't figure out how to get the light to have the tree actually turn on. But that was totally operator error, that had nothing to do with anything else, but it was, it was great. And actually, from that, just for, for whatever it's worth, at least a couple of people said that they would be interested in volunteering and to serve on a committee for the future. So let me give whoever needs those names, I'll get those to you. At least a couple of people.
Yeah, Lacy and Karen are working on, um, the committee for that series. The city shouldn't be running that program like an old-fashioned festival, these larger events, or they, they should be larger events, right? And the city needs to be a participant, there needs to be a committee, um, and, and so there's some good names in mind. I, I think, like, some, one of the Rotary Clubs is putting them, taking it on. And then the city will be involved, obviously, and TBFNR, the library, the cultural center, and, um, and gain, uh, a larger success.
Okay, cool, so, I mean, before, Don Griswold is one who's interested, and he's like a hoopla guy. And then, uh, and the other is, what's his name from? Husband and wife own the place that has games and?
Rob, oh, Robin.
Rob, and Rob, so those are the two.
A lot of these would be great.
Yeah, they'd be great, I mean, they're, they're good, so we'll keep that in mind for future committees. Alright, anything else, any other, any, any other, any things? Let's see, oh, and then, oh, I'm sorry, one other thing, we were Downtown Coalition, so in addition, uh, they also have the market, the Christmas market at Cultural Center, seemed to go well. Um, and again, they're, Molly Olson and, and Rita are pulling together and got that to work, so that was, that was good. Doing a great job, yep, so that was good. Alright, anything else? Alright, then, it looks like another executive session, alright.
David, sorry, before you were gonna talk about Golseth.
Oh, Golseth, oh, yes, thank you, Golseth, where's my name, Golseth? Alright, so, um, Sue sent out a Google poll, and we didn't hear from you all. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna spank Rex here. Elise, Denise, and Jean did not do their Google poll, did not. Okay, so we are trying to figure out when to go roll setting session. So, we've got at this moment, the day that looks the best, if you have your calendars, January 25th, a Saturday.
How long is it?
Yeah, we're saying four hours, aren't we, is that the current?
I think four to six, I think.
Four to six. Yep, yep, we got two yeses. Mr. Pyros, what do you got over there?
My wife's on a committee to say, well, I'm supposed to be heard.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I think maybe it's a yes to do.
You sure?
Is it okay?
It's just not acceptable to me.
Oh, it's an okay thing too? Oh, no. We can look. Um, what about the 18th of January? Also a Saturday. Also good? That's all right? Okay. Alright, so we will attempt to get something on January 18th, okay? Four to six hours. Now, let me just ask you one other question. We've had the discussion before that we thought the basis would be the community visioning outcome. Is that the, have we stayed on that? Sory, that's our foundational document? Okay, also, I'm talking to Sue, know that we may not be able to find someone available on January 18th, because these folks get this, and then we'll have to.
What about Jen's and Jen's charities?
So I, I don't know if they're the one that, that we've.
That is, that is one that's.
That's one of the ones.
Communication.
Okay, alright, so Sue, Jen, we're looking for the 18th, we can work it out, January 18th, okay? And community visioning is the basis, you could bring that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool, alright. Is that it? Sure? Didn't forget anything else, or might well have. Alright, um, okay, so now we are going into executive session.
Thanks for coming.